Can I welcome everybody to today's meeting of the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee, 30th of August. I'm councillor Terry Fox, I'm chair of this committee. Sorry we're a few minutes late, but a bit of housekeeping around today and we've certainly got no questions, no public questions today. The meeting today is open to the public and, as I said, we've received no petitions or no questions from the members. Can I just please request that mobile telephones and other such equipments are on silent mode as not to disturb the conduct or switched off? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the town hall staff. Assembly point is Tudor Square. Can I now just ask each member to introduce themselves as we go around? So first of all, that's it.
Thank you Chair. Martin Smith councillor for Dornley.
Richard. Yeah, Richard Williams, Member for Stanley's Ward. Shafak.
Shafak Mohamed Ekel Solward.
Thank you.
Jill.
Jonathan Dornley.
And Julie. Oh, worry. I know I get there eventually, before four o'clock anyway. Councillor McRooney, one of the three councillors for Woodhouse Ward, thank you. Cheers, Mick. Angela.
Councillor Adensia for Bromhill and Shawvale.
Thank you Angela. Douglas.
Douglas Johnson, City Ward.
Thank you. Brian.
Councillor Brian Lodge, Member for Bury Ward.
Thank you Brian. Julie.
Good afternoon, Julie Grokert, Stockbridge Towns Fund Board.
Paul.
Good afternoon, my honourable councillor, Paul Wood, one of the councillors representing Woodhouse Ward.
Thank you Paul, and I'll just go on officers while we're going around it. Gillian.
Gillian, Department of Director of Legal and Governance.
Thanks Gillian. James.
James Henderson, Director of Policy Performance and Communications.
Thank you Kate.
Kate Joseph, Chief Executive.
Thank you Kate. Craig.
Craig Rodgerson, Democratic Services.
Thank you. Thank you all for that, and I'll get officers as we present to introduce themselves. Apologies for absence.
Non-received Chair.
Thank you. Any exclusion of press and public for the any items?
None Chair.
Thank you. Declarations of interest, has any members on today's agenda got any declarations of interest? Julie.
Yeah, can you note please that I'm a member of the Stockbridge Towns Fund Board and that does appear on the agenda today? Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. The next item is the minutes of the previous meeting. Can we agree those minutes? Agreed? Thank you. The next item on the agenda, as I said, would be public questions and petitions, we've not received any of those today. Thank you. Item seven is the retirements of staff. There's a list of retirees. Can we note those and send our best wishes to those retiring? Thank you. Item eight, work programme. Anybody want to wish to move that? If not, can we agree that work programme going forward? Any signatures? Thank you.
Chair, can I just bring to your attention a couple of matters on that one?
Thank you.
So you're being asked to approve the amendments and changes which are in Appendix One. There's three proposals there. There's one on an extra item for October on the Race Equality Commission and that's a follow-up to the item that's on your agenda today. There's a proposed extra meeting in mid-November on the local plan and there's an item on there on substance misuse. So we've had some more clarification on the decision required on this and as a result of the timing, it's proposed that that go to the next available meeting, which is the finance sub, so we're just asking that you agree that. And then the second part, just to bring to your attention, is Section Two has a number of referrals from council petitions and resolutions and there's recommended responses in there for you to agree Chair.
Thank you. Julie, do you wish to raise your hand?
Yeah, it's just for clarification please Chair, in relation to the forward plan. We've got obviously the detailed information and there's a box on every agenda for prior member engagement development required and public participation engagement approach and most of that doesn't have anything therein, which I'm just a little bit concerned about given that now we have a committed system of governance and no one political party has control over the council, that we, you know, we're working as a collaborative cross-party. I'm just wondering where it's decided how we are doing the engagement that is required for each of the items that is on. And I say that because some have got some, so are we saying that the ones that are blank, we don't need or none is required, or has that got to be decided yet and if so by whom? Thank you.
Thank you Julie. Craig.
Thanks Chair, yeah, I think there is a lot of activity in that regard that is happening but it's not captured and recorded here and I think these work programmes were put together very quickly at the start of this process and that's something that we need to delve a little bit deeper on to get that information in here.
Okay, with those, can we agree the work programme as it is now? Thank you. On that then, can we now move to the formal decision processes? Item nine, the overview and performance management arrangements plan. Kate, are you open to just say a few words on it? James.
Thanks Terry, yes, thanks to all on S and R. So I just wanted to make a few framing remarks. We're considering, committee's considering three very significant papers today and all of them speak to the journey we're on as a council, to our performance, to our priorities and very importantly to the way we deliver our mission and our services to the city. James and colleagues are going to introduce each paper in turn and speak to the detail but I thought it would be helpful to provide a few framing remarks. First, we're considering a paper on corporate performance reporting. This may not be a topic that induces excitement in many, it really does not, it does me, it's absolutely critical and it incorporates a look back at the achievements of last year, reflecting in particular on the galvanising impact that the administration's one-year plan had in terms of guiding activities across the organisation and use of resources as we emerged from the pandemic. The one-year plan also provided a really clear statement to partners and stakeholders and using it in the way that we did and in terms of driving our performance provided focus for the whole of the organisation. And as the paper sets out, the majority, 59% of the commitments were delivered with the remainder continuing to make really good progress. What we've learnt from that is that it's absolutely clear that our organisation, indeed frankly any organisation of the size and complexity that we are as a council, needs to have a really clear set of guiding stars, that clear corporate plan, the plan that enables us to balance very significant and challenging budgetary constraints with the expectations, legitimate expectations and the needs of the citizens that we serve in the city alongside the unique challenges of our time and the cost of living crisis I know is at the forefront of all of our minds at the moment, for example. So building on the one-year plan and the proposal to place performance and delivery rigor at the heart of our culture as a council, the second paper then sets out our proposed corporate delivery plan for the coming year and this represents the first stage of what we're proposing should be a four-year journey of improvement. The plan deliberately focuses on what we need to achieve over the year ahead, given the complexity of the challenges facing us, but it doesn't step away from the fact that we need to go on that longer journey. In thinking about the second paper and the delivery plan, I'd want to emphasise that the how is just as important as the what. So while there are very specific commitments, outputs, milestones and targets within that plan, just as there were within the one-year plan, we also talk about the importance of being guided by our values as an organisation as we deliver the commitments within it and the values that the organisation has developed have been developed from the front line up with and guided by our staff across the council. Last but very certainly not least, in this trio of papers, we're going to consider a paper on the council's response to the Race Equality Commission. This is a really good example of a critically important priority. Indeed, our commitment to play our part in becoming an anti-racist city is embedded in the corporate delivery plan that we'll discuss in the second item. But the paper on the Race Equality Commission work reinforces that point that the importance is not just about what we do but how we do it. Throughout these three papers, there is a really clear thread that we both need to propose and deliver specific determined action, that we need to put in place systems and processes that enable us as a council to monitor and drive progress against those specific actions, but also a recognition that the culture and conditions we create as a council are critically important in terms of making and driving the change we want to see, to be that organisation that can deliver for the city that we serve. The final point I'd make, and I know James and colleagues will bring this out as we go through the specific papers, is that recognising the new governance process and system that we're working within as a council, it is really important that not just the Strategy and Resources Committee but all the individual policy committees have an absolutely critical role in supporting and demanding assurance about progress towards these commitments, making sure that where corrective action needs to be taken, it is being taken and also holding firm to that commitment that we have a very challenging budgetary environment in which to deliver and so our focus on both our budgetary commitments and the delivery plan priorities for the next year needs to be single-minded and absolutely focused. I think that's all I would want to say in terms of framing remarks and just to bear in mind, I guess, as we go through this, that there is that interdependency between those three papers. Thanks James.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon everyone, nice to be here. So as Kate has said, I'm going to just give a few remarks to introduce the performance report to begin with and then once we've concluded that, obviously we'll move on to the delivery plan. As Kate has said, this is a really important report before Strategy and Resources today, the first time actually in some considerable time that we have had a performance report on a decision-making agenda such as this one and we wanted to make sure that members were equipped with information about the performance of the organisation over the last year. So what the report does is, because this is the first time we've discussed this in some time, provides an overview of the council's performance management arrangements as a whole and sets out the importance of performance management for an effective organisation and one that is able to drive service improvement and as we'll come on to with the delivery plan, that is a critical concern for the organisation over the coming year. It also sets out how we have measured and managed performance against the one-year plan over the last year and it does, and we have done this through two complementary approaches that sit together. Firstly, we have a corporate performance report that my colleagues, Dan Chedsoy and Ben Arnold, who are here today, have overseen, which is really thinking about those aspects of the one-year plan which we can put some key performance indicators around, that we can monitor progress against those indicators and manage in that way. So we've got a set of activity around that. There's a second set of activity that is focused on what you might describe as the actions that sit within the one-year plan. So for example, the commitment to move to a 10-point plan for climate change and those actions have all been tracked as we've moved through the year. The report gives an overview of that performance and as Kate has said, of the commitments that we made in the one-year plan, 59% of those have either been delivered in full or indeed we have gone beyond what we said we would do in the one-year plan and the vast majority of the rest are well underway in terms of delivery and the only reason that they're actually not at green is because there was never any real prospect of those being delivered within the 12-month period. So again, as Kate has said, I think this demonstrates from a performance management point of view the real impact that a plan can have in terms of focusing the organisation on those issues that are most important to it. But what the report also highlights is where we have areas of underperformance as an organisation and really our performance management approach is focused on identifying where those issues might be, spotting them early and where we can taking corrective action. As we will come on to in the delivery plan, some of the issues that are within the delivery plan are things that have been identified as part of our performance monitoring and management through the last year. Those issues, we have a process for looking at those during the year, making sure that we understand what are the underlying causes of any issues of underperformance and really trying to get under the skin, as it were, of those things. So that includes areas that members will be familiar with such as performance in the customer contact centre where we know that there are significant issues, particularly although not exclusively related to revenues and benefits, but also includes issues such as homelessness where we've seen the context of the pandemic and the growing cost of living crisis actually have a significant impact on our performance and for example, the number of people who are in temporary accommodation and bed and breakfast accommodation. So it's important that we have an understanding of those things and that we're able to take action on those where we do identify them. The other thing that I want to say is that the performance management framework isn't simply about identifying areas of underperformance as an organisation, it's also about identifying where we are making progress and where we are improving and the report sets out to do that as well. So we have seen some significant areas of improved performance over the last year. So for example, some of the work that we have done on special educational needs and disabilities and making sure that those plans are put in place in a timely manner is very significant and there are a number of other areas of positive performance highlighted in the report. The final thing that the performance report does, again as Kate has alluded to, is to talk about the transition to the performance management of the delivery plan itself and given the focus of the delivery plan, as we'll come on to in a minute, is very much on some critical performance challenges for the organisation over the year ahead. Ensuring that we have a really good handle on how we are making progress against those performance challenges is essential really to the success of that delivery plan. And therefore, what we are doing at the current moment in time is to set out the performance baselines, the targets and the measures of success that we're going to use to track progress against that. And it's important that we have an overview of performance but that each committee also holds performance to account for the specific issues that it will be responsible for. So using my example of homelessness earlier, that would be something that we would expect to be monitored in detail within the Housing Policy Committee but with an overview of performance being provided back to this committee so that members of this committee can see overall how the organisation is performing and to hold the organisation to account for that performance. We also want to make sure that we continue to provide a holistic view of performance. So the delivery plan is necessarily focused but it would be remiss of us not to continue to collect data on and monitor and manage the performance of other areas that were not included within the delivery plan and we will continue to do that during the year ahead. I'll pause there because doubtless members have questions on the detail of this report. I will say that there is an appendix that's been provided to members that has some more detail on it of where those particular performance challenges are. Where possible, I will attempt to answer any questions but it may be that the detail of those answers may be better dealt with within the individual policy committees where the relevant officers can be brought in and you can have a conversation with them about some of those specific performance challenges that are brought out there. I'll pause there. Thank you Chair.
Thanks Ian, thank you Kate. Douglas.
Thanks, yeah. So first of all, just really appreciate the work that's gone into this because actually performance management's really important, I completely agree with that and it is a good thing to see it being taken, getting a grip of. I just wanted to flag up a couple of things which, to be honest, James, I prefigured with you in the email this morning, so again, appreciate that. First thing is about, I think it is important for us all in this room to see how we've done against, starting with the one-year plan last year and so on the appendix that has been circulated, it lists the commitments we made in the one-year plan. We don't have anything in front of us to show to what extent we've met each of those commitments and if it's possible to provide that, I think it's something that we should all be interested in and appreciate this difficulty about extracting the data to that. And I say that partly because actually there will be some political argument, to be honest, about to what extent we've met those commitments because many of them are quite subjective. So it'd be good to know what, and where we all agree that we've met them, we might actually have different views as to how we've met a particular commitment. So it would be good to have a formal word that we could regard as definitive. So if we could take that away, that'd be really good. And then the other thing is, I'll say, I always have this concern about public bodies that measure performance, that measures and then choose the wrong ones, which skews the way that staff work towards targets that are not necessarily helpful. And so the concern for me is about distinguishing things we need to measure and the things that we can genuinely count as performance. So the instance I flagged up with James this morning was about homelessness presentations. So the point is, and I completely accept the advice, it's really important to measure those, I agree with that, but to say that that is something that's the council's influence is a bad thing because that leads to bad decision-making, this gatekeeping and acting unlawfully. If staff feel that they've got to try and keep that figure down, if more people present as homeless, it's not a reflection on homelessness staff. What the council does is the way it deals with people who find themselves in that situation. So it's a long-winded way of just flagging up those, I think it was really important with the caution there and maybe we need to draw out the decision in what we measure and what we say staff should be aiming at. I'll leave that with you, thanks.
Thanks Douglas. I'll bring Mica Martin in and then I'll bring in him, we can pick out the specifics. Mick.
Thanks Chair. I think in some ways mine are similar questions to Douglas's. One is about how do we know that we've made the right choices in terms of the performance measurements? And given that I'm a co-chair of a committee, I want to know what influence or challenge that committee has in terms of what it seems to be presented by this committee as its objectives. In other words, how can you reconcile the autonomy that we're supposed to have as separate committees from this to the fact that these performance measures seem to be being handed down by somebody else, as it were? And the other is, given that meetings like these are not meant just simply for internal consumption, they're meant to be viewed by the public, how could we justify that what we're saying is similar or relates to the lived experience of the average Sheffielder? Because I'm not actually sure how we can do that, given what we've got in front of us right now. Okay.
Thanks Mick. I'll bring Martin in and I'll let James cover the points. That's it.
Yeah, thank you Chair. Similar kind of question to councillor Johnson and councillor Rooney. I completely agree that having targets in any kind of performance management system is absolutely crucial. But I'd just note that out of the 18 charts you've provided us with, only two of them say what the target is. So can you just reassure us that each one of those does have a target and could we have the details of that please? If nothing else, start the discussion that colleagues have already mentioned about whether particular targets are appropriate or not.
Thanks Matt. I've got Joe and Julie so if we cover these three first and then we'll go to Joe and Julie and then there may be some points covered in that. James, okay.
Thank you, thank you councillors. If I take each of those points in turn, so councillor Johnson, on your first question about the one-year plan progress measures, yes, we can, we will commit to providing that to members of the committee. That information is available, it's just, as you say, a question of extracting it from the system and presenting it in a helpful way. So if you'll bear with us, we'll make sure we get that to you. Just on your second question, which was a broader question I think than just being about the homelessness presentation measure, but I think this speaks to two things really. One is that we need to be able to make sure that through this performance framework and through the framework that we've put in place around the delivery plan, that we're able to measure both outcomes and outputs. So outputs being the set of interventions effectively that we make and the direct impact of those measures and the outcomes being the wider impact that those measures have on people and communities. I think the other point that I would make is that it's important that we, and I think this probably relates to the first point really, it's important that we see performance in the round. So absolutely, a focus in your example purely on homelessness presentations would be absolutely the wrong thing to do, I don't think there's any doubt about that. But it's in that example, it's an important piece of context for enabling us to understand the level of acceptances, the level of families moving into temporary accommodation and how that's likely to change, to increase or to decrease and therefore making sure that we've got that whole picture is really important to us being able to measure and manage performance. And what I hope we've done in the appendix that's been provided is to do that and not just present those things in isolation. If I can move on to councillor Rooney's questions, I think the first one was around the autonomy of the individual policy committees vis-à-vis this committee. I'll let Jill correct me if I've got this wrong but, sorry Jill. The Strategy and Resources Committee is intended, part of its role is to set up the overall direction for the organisation and to set a clear plan for the organisation as a kind of a single piece. The performance management arrangements that go around that are part of that overall plan. So the delivery plan that we'll consider in the next item is very much focused on where are the specific issues and challenges that we have as an organisation that we need to focus on. That doesn't mean to say for one moment that there isn't room for the individual policy committees to debate and to discuss the specifics within that and to ensure that there is the right course of action for those specific issues and that officers are being held to account for delivery against those. But this is about the overall shape of the framework and indeed the plan for the organisation. So I think that that interplay is at the root of the question. But Jill, do you want to say anything on that before I move on?
Thank you James. The only thing that I've add is that you are a decision-maker within Strategy and Resources and it's a really important role that you've got as Chair of your committee and therefore you have a voice to say how you have a voice to say how this overall strategic direction should be set and what are the things that should be performance managing within that. And I agree entirely with James that then, within your committee, there may be other things. The performance management framework must follow the lead of the committees rather than it being the other way around. This is something that's been presented to you for your consideration, but it can be shaped and moulded and developed as you, as decision-makers, see fit.
Thank you, Chair. And then just the final couple of questions, one from councillor Rooney about how we ensure that we've got the voice of customers or voice of citizens as part of this. I think, being completely frank, that that's underdeveloped at the moment in our arrangements. What we are aspiring to do is to move to a position where our performance and our understanding of the impact of our service delivery takes into account a number of different perspectives. So what we're talking about today is a, sort of, I guess, what you might describe as a fairly traditional approach to performance management, which is looking at the kind of the nuts and bolts of service delivery. We need to layer into that, and this is one of the areas for development, some of our financial measures, which are inconsistently included within that at the moment. But also, and this is your point, how we understand the experience of the services that we provide from the point of view of those who are receiving them, understanding things like satisfaction, for example, how we build in information about complaints or indeed where we're getting things right. So the actual experience of customers is not as deeply embedded in here as it needs to be and that's an area that we need to work on. Final question then was from councillor Smith around target setting. This is critically important part of an effective performance framework. We have it in there, we have targets in place. For some measures, that's not universally the case, as I think you've picked up. What I think the delivery plan gives us the opportunity to do is to really focus in on target setting as something that we need to get in place for the year ahead. As I say, it isn't universally in there at the moment, but it's an area that we know that we need to absolutely get right and make sure is properly in place because otherwise it will drive the wrong sorts of behaviours within the organisation. Thank you.
Thanks, James. I've got Joe and Julie. Is anybody else? If not, then we'll go straight to, I recommend Joe and then Julie.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so thank you for this. I mean, I, you know, I welcome this report. It's clearly an important piece of work and in some respects, a bit of a work in progress. And, you know, I welcome it in that spirit. I suppose my question is, I mean, obviously, I think we're going to approve this report today. It doesn't feel to me that that would discharge our duties in terms of performance monitoring performance. And so I want to be clear, really, what members are going to be doing going forward from this. I think clearly if performance measures get reported to the policy committees on a regular basis, that would be, that would be one thing. And obviously, that the kind of corporate ones would come here in some detail. But, you know, is that the thinking or is there a clearer plan as to how members can obviously continue to take responsibility for some of this and to have that oversight? That's the first point. The second one, I am struck by how little Wastin Street scenes stuff there is in here. I do, I don't know whether it's, you know, I can claim credit for a miracle turnaround the last couple of months, but there's a little bit on graffiti and fly-tipping, but I do think there are challenges in Wastin Street scene and issues that need to be part of this monitoring. And so I'm just slightly curious why the big-ticket items in terms of the state of the highways and so on don't seem to be in there? Because obviously, that is a piece of work that was in the, our council year ahead thing that was referred to, that obviously we need to get a grip of. Thanks.
Thanks, Joe. Just before I bring Julie, members were asked to put comments forward to this and I'm sure as you get into your committees, those committees will flag up exactly what they feel are the real issues. Now, if we came with a great encyclopedia of measurements, then I'm sure you would say, oh, I'm going to make a second hour of Tom and Ew from your committees. So all I will say to members is, there is an expectancy as chairs, co-chairs, that you and your committee will flag up what else you want putting in. And I think how you started this, Joe, is it is a living, breathing document. But I know old gaffer who I used to work with said, if you can't measure it, you can't manage it. And I think that's where we've got, that's the real issue for me, where we've got to start from on this. Julie?
Thank you, Chair. I've got a number of points that sort of really pick up and thread around what other members have said. And I think probably start to be the point that Joe's just made, really. This is about for me, how does this fit into individual policy committees' work programmes and how do we make that work? So I think things that are in this document, which is a very good document, and thank you for officers who've put it together, I think need to be flagged up on work programmes as items that are actually in this performance document so that members and as committee chairs, we are clear that those are the things that, as a Strategy and Resources group, we are prioritising as strategic objectives for the organisation so that I think we're clear on that and also so that members of the public can pick up on that and can see that we are, that those are the things that perhaps we are prioritising above other things. Because we're all dealing with so much, we've all got really large work programmes and we could probably all put loads of stuff into here. So it's about how we make the best use of this document strategically for me, which I think is quite important. And that probably goes to the point Gillian made about how we can sort of shape it and add things into it. And I think it's important that we can do that. But to do that, as individual committees, we need to understand, without having to read all this, what is pertinent to our particular policy committee. So I think that's why it's probably be important if we could look at doing something around that way. I think the other thing is just picking up some of the, you know, the points near about, you know, like proportion of the workforce that's had a development review within the last 12 months. Well, you know, all of the workforce should be having a professional development review. So it's, for me, it's more about where and what other people aren't having them and why and what are we doing about that? So it's, in some instances, it's flipping the information on its head so we can, you know, see what we're doing. Education, healthcare plans issued within 20 weeks. Well, it's great to know the ones that we've issued, but if we've not issued more than we've issued, then again, we're not doing terribly well there. So the performance stuff about the whole outcome and not just the specific little part of it, I think is really important. And I think something else that I would certainly find helpful, I don't know about other people, is just some nice, simple visual diagram about how the information in here fits with what's in the delivery plan so that we can, and then fits within our individual work programmes so that we all see how, very clearly, how this is all worked together and it's given us the strategic driving direction of the organisation without everybody having to read lots and lots of complicated documents that might be a little bit of a turn-off and may also be quite helpful for the public to look at as well to understand where we're going. And then just to finish on real high, because it struck me when I was reading it the other day, where it talks about working with schools to design a programme for children and young people whose education has been disrupted due to Covid. It's really, really important that we do that. You know, the young people are the future of our city and never be long to miss an opportunity. I'd just like to say, please go and talk to Stockbridge High School because they got the best GCSE results in their history last week. So there is some really good work going on out there as well, particularly for our young people that I think we can pick up on and I just thought I would plug that at the end, Chair. Thank you.
Thanks, well, James, you just want to pick up comments and I think if members are okay, we could do nine and 10 on here. I think we've been jumping on two different issues here then, and so if we can, we could look at them on nine and 10. James?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, just to pick up those questions. So councillor Otten was asking about how members will be kept up to date on performance over the course of the year. Again, I think this is where the delivery plan is really, really important. So this committee will absolutely receive regular reports on organisational performance as a whole. It's important, as I say, that we do that and we've got a plan as to how that would happen. Not quite sure whether it features in the work programme yet, but we'll make sure that it does. And then it's, as I said in my opening remarks, it's really important that each committee has, is given, and we will endeavour to do this, is given that overview of performance for their areas. I know that quite a lot of the committees have already had that. Where that hasn't taken place, we will ensure that that does happen and that each committee then needs to sort of continue to monitor the specific issues and areas for improvement identified within the delivery plan as part of its work programme. So I think, and maybe this goes to councillor Growcut's point about a sort of a visual diagram that kind of pulls all of this together, that might be one of the ways in which, or one of the things that we could include as part of that, is sort of how some of this stuff will come through and be presented to committees during the course of the year. Wastin Street seen was the second question, I think councillor Otten. Absolutely, it's not a strong feature within the current performance framework. It is, however, identified, particularly street seen, as a key challenge within the delivery plan. As a result, it will therefore feature extremely strongly within the revised performance framework that we've put together for this coming year. So you will see that much more prominence than it perhaps does at the moment. And then just finally, on councillor Growcut's questions, I think I've probably already addressed the point about the policy committee work programmes. We need to make sure that's firmly in there, understanding what's behind the data. This is, I think, partly about the importance of having the relevant service director or head of service come and talk to each committee about the detail of the performance framework in their area, what sits behind that, the action plans, the improvement plans that are underway and giving you that rounded position about what's going on. The data can only tell you so much. It can give us some helpful hints and ideas as to where we need to focus our attention, but it's only by understanding that broader picture that I think members will get that full picture as to what's going on. And then I've already mentioned the visual diagram, we'll pull that together. I think that's a really helpful suggestion. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Another question. In this ung council that we're in at the moment and we've got no overall control, I think documents nine and 10 do actually give all 84 members an opportunity to discuss the way forward and some policy ideas. And I think as others have said, it gives the autonomy back to the committees, but we just set a direction as this ung council won't have any kind of political direction of the issues because not one party has overall control. So therefore, this does give a guiding light to those committees and for all members to discuss and for chairs to get around. So if I can, because we've talked across nine and 10, can I present those recommendations and if we can agree those? Joe?
Sorry, Chair, I did have comments on item 10 as well. I thought we were just taking item 9.
Sorry, okay then. If we take item 9 then, because, and then I'll take comments on 10, but I don't expect to go too lengthy into 10, as I think we've touched on a lot of that in this previous conversations. But on 9, can we agree those recommendations? Thank you. Anybody against? If not, okay. Item 10 then, any questions, comments on 10, Joe?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so I obviously, again, welcome the report. It's, again, it's really important. Again, it's something of work in progress. We could easily spend an hour on each page of this, I think I've said before, and I don't intend to go into any, you know, I don't intend to do that. I have comments that I've sent in. I'm not sure how well they've been reflected in this, but obviously, it's a work in progress and discussions can be ongoing. I just do want to highlight one thing, and that's on page 95, the local area committees thing. I think the challenge here, the outcome here is a little bit misconceived in that the local area committees are, you know, I would like them to be more significant than they are in terms of their powers and their budgets and their role, but at the moment, they are, they have a limited role in terms of the decision-making and the spending power of the council. And so if we say our outcome is increased participation in and influence over the decision-making progress, as we do on page 95, the way to achieve that would be to get members of the public to come to this meeting rather than their LAC meeting, you know, for 99.9% of the value that that would achieve. So, you know, I think we have to, I say, this is a question for members really to have a clear view on what they want the LACs to do rather than for officers, and I've made this point before. As it stands, that outcome is not going to be achieved by increased participation in the LACs because the LACs are not where the decisions are being made. So I think that page 95 wants thinking about again. I'm not proposing to vote against it at this stage, but I think as long as that point is taken on board, that, you know, I'm happy to approve the report. Thank you.
Thanks. So if I can, just as chair of this committee and like to come under this committee and for finance reasons, he'll come under this committee. I met with all like chairs and officers on Friday and that was one of the points I put forward. So it's not meant to be an holding position, but actually a discussion that members can have in their own likes as well, because it was all framed about what next steps are and what does the next journey, path, journey look like, which they're going to go away for the chairs group and report back. So hopefully get a report back to this committee and then for members to have a look. And I think that's one of the conversations. What we don't want to do is take their autonomy away. Any other? Brian?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. It's following on really, I suppose, from what councillor Otten said there. I think it is important and, you know, when the bullet points us down there, where do we get to in 2022, 23, talks about future opportunities for influence and devolved powers. And it was always one of the plans when we were looking at introducing the likes, to bring out more decision-making, more devolved budgets down to the likes, because that was one of the things that we all said, local councils have got more understanding of the local priorities and that's important, why the likes are there then, to start looking at some of these decisions. So I think the opportunity is there and we need to be working with the likes. And I know we have discussions in our like, in the South East, about what we'd like to see and feeding that back through the chairs group. There's got to be more things that we can devolve out there to make those decisions down at the ground and down in the localities rather than people coming in here and listening to us talking about things and let's see some action out there.
Thanks, Brian. So with those recommendations, can we agree and then move on? Richard?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I didn't know whether to bring this under nine or 10 because it really does bounce between the two. It's, I'll start with, under nine, page 57, it talks about investing £2 million a year in your services. Now, I know there's been problems with that with recruitment, et cetera. But then in 10, on page 140, it talks about the £2 million investment, but at the bottom it talks about that has now been reduced by £500,000. So it's really a point of clarity, what is the budget and how did it get reduced? I might have missed it when talking to the officers, but I was, that's the first I've been aware of that.
Thanks, Richard. My understanding, where it was talking in quid, if there needs to be amendments in that document. I've got councillor Wood, I'll bring councillor Wood in and then we'll raise that. Paul?
I would like to see more work in the plan on employment for young people and apprenticeships.
Thanks, Paul. And I'm sure when we get to the business and skills committee, they'll be pushing that. I'm sure councillor Smith will be leading that discussion within that committee. Just on the £2 million, James, can we just kind of, have you got clarification? If not, we need to get the clarification. In my understanding, where it was £2 million quid, they'll be putting?
I'll take that away and get clarification for members of the committee.
Okay, thanks for that. Okay, thanks for that. Okay with that, amendment, we'll check on that. Richard, can we agree those recommendations and move forward? Okay, thank you. Anybody against? If not, thanks everybody for that. The next item is item 12, no, sorry, 11, coming in on racist issues, delivery. Laurie, thank you.
Thank you Chair, apologies for the slight delay there. Thank you, I'll just say a few words to introduce the report. But I wanted to start by saying thank you to members as well, but also particularly to the commissioners and the people who gave evidence through the work of the Race Quality Commission. And as you know, it's been a real endeavour by the commissioners themselves, on behalf of the city, and the commitment and dedication they showed to produce such a high quality report, which is going to be fundamental to the change that we want to undertake as a city, and particularly in tackling prejudice and discrimination. I also wanted to just say thank you to my team as well, to Adele and Bashir and Jane Kemp in particular, who've supported the commission through the work. So it's been absolutely, it's been a huge challenge, particularly against the back of the pandemic, but the report sets out a proper aspiration for where we want to be as a city. I think it's fair to say the report demonstrates significant scale of discrimination and prejudice that we face, but also, and actually reflects the scale of the change that we need to undertake as a whole place, as a whole city. It's not directly about the council in itself, but also as an organisation, as a city council, if we want to make this a truly inclusive city for people to live and work, but also as a truly inclusive organisation. We want to be an anti-racist city and an anti-racist organisation, and it's a critical priority for us as Sheffield City Council, as Kate Josephs outlined in the introduction to this. It's fundamental to our priorities as an organisation and something we will be endeavouring to drive forward over the coming years. It's about how we deliver our services, it's about how we behave as an organisation, it's about how we behave as an employer, as a recruiter, as a major civic partner in the city. But it's also about how we listen and fundamentally connect to and hear communities and their experience and their lived experience of what it's like living in Sheffield. The response sets out what we're going to do as a result of the REC report, and as I stress, this is about the city council's response. And we're working with the anchor institutions and VCF partners as well to think about how we respond as a whole city. But each organisation has to take responsibility for the things it can control. So what the report sets out is the three critical areas we want to focus on as a city council. Primarily focusing on our staff, about how we empower and educate our staff, how we diversify our workforce so that we reflect the communities that we serve, and how we tackle racism and discrimination within our organisation so that people who work here feel like a part of an inclusive workforce. For our services, we need to think about and really focus action on how we de-bias system so that decisions and investments are made in a way that doesn't prejudice against any community in Sheffield, and how we make decisions, ensuring that we're fully considering equality implications in everything we do. How we maximise the use of data and intelligence to drive out inequality, should say out, inequality and discrimination into our service delivery. So essentially, making sure that we're really comfortable in asking people their experience and asking those demographic questions so that we can, when people are using and accessing our services, we can identify if discrimination exists and drive that out. And then finally, we've got a huge role as city leader. We were partly responsible for establishing the Race Equality Commission, and councillor Aptazam Mohammed had a leading role in that. But if we want to lead whole place change, this is a job for the entire city, for communities, for the key organisations, and for the private, public and voluntary sector as well. As part of that, we are working to support the commissioners to try and establish a legacy body, to provide real independent challenge to how we operate as a city, so to ensure over the years that we're delivering the recommendations that we have committed to as an organisation, and that our partner organisations are doing the same. This is step one in the response we'll be bringing to the committee. This is to recognise that the Race Equality Commission, as one reported, that its scale of challenge that it represents is significant, and that it is something that we need to take fundamentally seriously as a council. But we didn't think it was appropriate and certainly wasn't probably doable in to reflect the scale of challenge and give it the respect that it deserves to produce a detailed action plan in the time since July to now. So we've been working on that, internally working with directors across the organisation and staff across the organisation, including REC commissioners who were part of the city council staff, to look at developing, to develop a proper action plan that really considers what are the things we can do quickly in the short term, to check some practical and pragmatic steps that really start to drive change. And then secondly, recognise where things do take longer, think change on this scale will take time, but we need to get on that journey right now. And just finally, we are working with that group of commissioners on the legacy arrangements. I think that independent challenge to hold us to account against an independent document, ourselves as a council, but the other organisations in the city, to ensure that we're delivering the change that our communities are expecting of us. And that is a fundamental step that we are working on with that group right now. So colleagues from the council are involved in that piece of work. Chair, I don't want to say much more than that, obviously open to questions, but I just wanted to provide a quick summary of what was in the initial response from the city council.
Thanks Laurie, and I think we all want to say thanks to the team and for all those commissioners that took part there. Shafak?
Thank you Chair, and I'm just going to follow up on that Chair, in terms of recommendation two, which recognises the commitment and dedication and time that the Race Equality Commission has put in. And I think we've talked about this away from the public meetings Chair, but I think, you know, is an opportunity now to actually formally thank them. So I think if we can tweak that recommendation to actually maybe you as Chair or jointly with the chief exec, to kind of formally write to those commissioners for their time that they gave, you know, over quite a long period. And obviously in particular, the Chair of that, you know, Professor Kevin Hilton himself. And like I said Chair, alongside you and other colleagues, we attended the launch, and there was a genuine buzz there of people saying, now we've got this work done. And I think the message is clear Chair, that the work has been documented, but actually what people are now wanting is action. So I look forward to, you know, your team Laurie and other colleagues here behind me, that, you know, the work that you're going to do in terms of how we're going to make this happen for the council, but more importantly for the city. Because, you know, we can lead on this, but if we don't have our partners on board and they're also taking action, we're not going to succeed. So I think that needs to be the clear message from today to, you know, welcome it, receive the initial kind of response, but actually we're going to be looking at the detail of it. And like I said Chair, just want to tweak that recommendation two. If, I'm sure no one's going to object to that, cheers.
Thanks Shafak, I don't think there'll be any objection to tweaking that. Any more questions, comments to us?
Thanks, just reflecting on the previous discussion about performance indicators, and just looking back at that paper, there's nothing in there that really measures how well we're doing on race issues, and I just wonder if there's something there that could be developed. I mean, to be fair, there is something about the distribution of grades across the council, but what perhaps we're looking for is something similar to the staff survey, which I think where we used to do those showed us some quite revealing data about disparities in basically how BME people feel about their employment in the council compared to the workforce as a whole, and whether it'd be helpful to have some measures like that to inform the basis of the work, maybe just something to take away then.
Thank you councillor Johnson, I think, yeah, completely agree with that. I think we will be doing that sort of activity. The other thing is, we obviously produce, we still produce an annual equalities report for the city council, which used to come to scrutiny, will probably come to this environment at some point after Christmas. That provides quite a significant and detailed assessment of the city's population as a whole and how that feels against our equality objectives, but then of the city council's workforce. And there's some really clear demonstrable indicators under there. Question, one of the things that REC recommends is that we have a, in a similar guise to the gender equality, gender pay gap, we have a race focused pay gap as well. We'll continue to do that, but obviously that provides like a very, very detailed evidence base which can sit beneath our performance targets. As Kate Josephs and James Henderson have both outlined, this becomes a fundamental priority for us, it's in our delivery plan. And I think as a committee, you'll be expecting to see some significant change in how we look as a city council and how that experience should feel to live and work in the city, but to work for us.
Okay, thanks for that, Joe?
Thanks Chair, and thank you for the report, thanks obviously to the commissioners for the work they did. I am conscious that this is the second time we've had a kind of a holding paper in response to this report, and I appreciate, as you said, that it's, there's a large piece of work we need to do in response to it. I do wonder, I recognise that we welcome the report, that there's a mood to deliver on it, there's enthusiasm about it, and I don't want to, last thing I want to do is pour cold water on that, but I have to ask, is part of the reason we have a second holding response not just that there's a lot of work to do, that some of it is quite difficult? And the reason I ask that is because I'm conscious in other, you know, certainly having been on the police and crime panel for a few years, we occasionally would have reports relating to racial issues in policing. And one of the things you would hear when the new report came out was, we didn't need another report, we had the last report, and there were one before that, and one before that, and if just some of these recommendations would get implemented, we wouldn't have needed this report. And so, you know, the mood is positive, which is right, which is good, the ambition I accept is there. But what makes this so different, that this is actually going to be done this time, is the question. And if there are asks that are difficult, what are we going to do? Are we going to have an open conversation about that? Or are we going to just hope to get forgotten, you know, is it going to get kicked in the long grass? Which I, you know, I realise there's no intention, no desire to do that here, but that does seem to be what happens. So, you know, what are we going to do if it turns out in working out this big piece of work that some of it's actually quite difficult to do?
I'll just bring Mick in and then cover those points, Mick?
Thanks Chair, can I apologise in advance if it's actually in the papers Laurie, but I'm only just back from a little bit of annual leave. It's the, you did rightly say that this is a citywide issue, it's not just for the council. So I'm not personally clear where or how we're going to get a citywide sign up. Where's the formal process for that to happen? Because we've got, I mean, we've got obviously a mechanism through, for council for us to do that, but I'm not sure where that lies with people like the universities or whatever that might be. So there's got to be a process, or some form of meeting, board, whatever you might want to call it, where that happens, and I'm not clear where that is. And I realise that the next question might be slightly in advance of what's going to happen, I believe in September, but shouldn't the paper we've just had about key performance indicators have something in about the issues that are raised in this report and the process that's taken place over the last two or three years? I mean, it's probably, as I say, premature of me to raise that, but we've got to slot them in somewhere. And not only have we got to slot them in somewhere, but within the structures that exist within, and again, I'll just use the NHS or universities, they've got to find a mechanism for introducing performance indicators of their own. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you councillor Rooney and to councillor Otten as well. I'll try and pick up some points, and I know, I think Kate wants to come in on some of the organisational leadership and ownership of it points as well. Just starting with yours, I think on the first, this was a city endeavour from the start. So when it was initiated whilst Aptazam, councillor Aptazam Mohammed sort of led the work from the city council perspective, we've got a clear sign up and ownership from the organisation from day one, and there's a set of letters supporting that. And also as part of the launch of the report, we work quite closely with all the anchor institutions to ensure that they're trying to, they're going to embed this in their structure, and they're going to support the delivery of those recommendations. So part of the work, the development of the legacy body, is to make that co-owned, so that it's not something that is going to be a city council, sort of arms length body, it's going to be something that is independent, but is supported and hopefully funded by the set of civic institutions in the city, because it's there to provide a whole chain of light up to us as organisations to drive the change that we're committing to. So I think we're okay on that. On the performance point, absolutely right, I think that is exactly where we should be going with it. We've already, you'll have seen if you're in the report, there's lots of detail and there are a lot of actions and recommendations. One of the critical ones for me is that use of evidence and intelligence and data, and how consistent we are in that in an organisation like ours, but also across the city as well. Because if we're trying to drive change, for example, people from Black Asian and minoritised ethnic groups having greater representation at senior governance levels, at leadership of organisations, we have to collect the same data to be able to show we're making progress. So part and parcel of this is ensuring that we have a consistency across that dataset, and that's going to be absolutely critical. So we can build this into our performance system, but it'll only help us demonstrate the change we're making, we need to do that alongside some of the other institutions as well, and that will help the legacy body hold us to account. So that's where we're at.
Thanks Laurie, just to sort of restate that, and particularly, I think councillor Otten, your point is well made, and it's very clear in the Race Equality Commission report that one of the criticisms, I think, that can be legitimately laid at all major institutions in the city's sort of doorstep, is that there have been reports before, there's been work before, and it hasn't led to the sustained improvement that's needed. And certainly, we've been very conscious as we've been pulling together this paper and indeed putting in place the work that's going to be needed for the detailed action plan for the council for the October meeting, that there is a risk that it's perceived that we're deliberately moving slowly, and that it couldn't be further from the truth. One of the things that I think is really important is as we take the very detailed, very thorough and comprehensive set of recommendations in the Race Equality Commission, we take the time to essentially sort through and order and sequence them. There is no world in which any organisation is going to be able to do all of them at the same time, all at once. And one of the things we're doing is talking in particular to our staff, to our partners and to organisations about which we should prioritise first, what can be done rapidly, which are some of those foundational actions. So a really good example, as has been raised here, is that we haven't got enough of a strong, detailed data and evidence base as an organisation at our fingertips. And so that ability to hold ourselves to account, as councillor Rooney's flagged, is not yet there. And so we must get that in place first. So I think what we are, what we're working on with staff, and in a way that engages in particular our Black Asian and minoritised ethnic staff within the organisation, is a piece of work to bring together a proposal for sets of actions that can be done, the right sequencing, the right order, and the right set of ambition and targets. But I think if we see this as a once and done, we'll be missing the point. This is about a sustained effort over potentially quite a number of years to change the culture in our own organisation, to change the culture in the way we work with and deliver services, and to provide leadership alongside all of the anchor institutions in the city to demonstrate that this isn't a report that's just going to sort of sit on a shelf. So I think really, really important that we take that time, and I think that's what we need to be judged against frankly. And the legacy body, as Laurie said, will certainly, I fully expect, do that.
Thanks Kate, Laurie?
And just to add to that, I think Kate's point is absolutely bang on. I think there's also something about, there's a big learning piece for me in here in terms of the report, but for the city as a whole as well, about taking the time to listen. So some of that development of those actions is going to be critical, and it will learn, it will iterate, it will develop as we go forward. But we also, there's a large element of those recommendations which talks about how we talk to communities, and that includes our staff as well, and taking the time to do that in a way that is genuine, is meaningful, and actually shapes those actions. And so we have to take the time to do that as part of this, and some of that isn't immediately quick, but it needs to be done in a way that ensures there's collective ownership institutionally, but in terms of communities and, as Kate said, in terms of our staff as well.
Thank you, if there's no more questions, comments, I'd just like to put a comment in as well. As Chair, being there at the launch, and as Shafak had said, listening to Professor Kevin Hilton and those commissioners with the drive- and those commissioners with the drive, the enthusiasm and the real kind of passion that they got to make change, not with only in our organisation, but within the city. It's quite clear that to move this forward, we've got to get on with it. We've got to start doing it, but we're going to have to deal with this with the other anchor organisations across the city to make this an anti-racist city. And those organisations will have their own autonomy as well. So we've got to get on with this. And it was, it was quite thought provoking really in some respects of some of those conversations, those stories, those people's life journeys etcetera that they went through. So for us to get on with this, start moving and doing it in a thoughtful and correct way that we need to do. And my understanding is we've got another staff survey going out shortly, will we? Kate, is it?
We've committed within the delivery plan actually to make sure that we get a really good quality staff survey out over the course of the next year. And that is both about making sure that we have this really good granular data to respond to Race Quality Commission, but actually it relates to a number of other points in the delivery plan. So for example, councillor Grokko's point earlier about the number of staff that are receiving regular performance discussions. There are a whole set of bits of information about the way our organisation runs, where we need to make sure we've got a good, regular, robust form of inquiry to ensure that we're not just, you know, we're hearing from our staff. So that will be a big priority for the next year to make sure we get that in as soon as possible.
Thank you Kate. With those comments and the tweet to the recommendation nominated by Shefak, can we agree to his recommendations? Agreed? Thank you. Any against? No. Okay, thank you. Can we go to item 12? And thanks Laurie for that report to the Ombudsman, I think I've got, Ombudsman, Final Report and Transition Improvement Programme. Is that you, Joe?
Hi, good afternoon. I'm going to, first of all, I've got two reports to present. The first of which, as councillor Fox has said, is a report to outline the report, the public interest notice published by the Ombudsman that resulted from the council's failure to support a young person through their transition to adulthood. And also to provide an update to the committee on progress made to improve transitions to adulthood for children and young people in response to that report and wider improvements that the council committed to in the one year plan and has committed to as part of their, our SEND Accelerator Progress Plan for children with special educational needs and disabilities. The report, which is published on the local government ombudsman website and which you can access via the website or through the link to this report online, was regarding a complaint that the ombudsman upheld about the support to a young person with SEND over a period 2017 to 2021. The complaint was that the council and education and children's services failed to provide appropriate support following problems with their care provider. Because of those problems with care services and the lack of appropriate support, the young person could not attend college due to their anxiety and depression. The complaint was that Sheffield City Council failed to properly review the young person's education, health and care plan between 2016 and 2021 and did not provide her with education from 2017 to 2021 as it failed to consider alternative provision. As a result of the investigation undertaken by the council in response to that complaint and in response to the requirements set by the ombudsman, the council is required to take remedial action and has published, and has publishing this report to set out the content of the investigation and the report from the ombudsman and also our response and improvements made subsequently. The commitment made in our corporate plan was to improve the transition to adulthood for all our learners and also to improve our approach to transition of young people from children's services to adult services. Furthermore, we have been working in response to a special educational needs and disabilities revisit from Ofsted that took place in February 2022 to review our progress against seven areas of weakness that were identified in our 2018 inspection of special educational needs and disabilities. The inspection revisit identified that we'd made really good progress, sufficient progress against six of the areas that we had been short on at our inspection originally, but that there was insufficient progress in our multi-agency approach to special educational needs and disabilities transitions in the city. As a result, we were required by the Department for Education and NHS England to complete an accelerator progress plan, which we are now well underway with. So to update on the ombudsman's actions, the payments recommended as remedial action by the ombudsman will be made by the council by mid-September. And senior officers have met with Mrs B and Miss C, as they're referred to in the ombudsman's report, to offer a full apology and will meet again to go through the outcome of the investigation in more detail with them. In addition, Miss C will continue to be supported by the council's chief training, SCND College, and the team that have supported her through the last year. And the cost of that will be borne through the council from core funding. We have, subsequent to the corporate plan commitment, invested in additional resource and reshaped resource in our children's and adult services in order to really focus on improving the experience of transition to adulthood for children and young people who are receiving, who have special educational needs, disabilities or are in children's services and supported by children's services. This has meant that we have now got a fully recruited to, sorry, a fully recruited to preparation for adulthood team who work with young people, will work with young people and their families from the age of 14 in order to ensure that they are focused on planning for a successful transition to adulthood. We also now have a fully recruited team in adult services who will support these young people through to the age of 25 to ensure that there is support ongoing and that those young people in, who remain in education for a longer period of time are also supported through that transition. And finally, the SEND Accelerator Plan is well underway and we have had our initial monitoring visit from Department for Education. We'll continue to have monitoring visits to assess our progress on the Accelerator Action Plan on a monthly basis over the next nine months. And the focus for that action plan will increasingly be on demonstrating positive improvements and improved experience for children and young people and the adults who support them in the city. So the next steps are for the completion of the ombudsman's requirements to continue with the embedding of the changes made in children's and adult services to support transitions to adulthood and ongoing and continued embedding and delivery of the multi-agency accelerator plan. And I just ask the committee to note that the content of the report and particularly the findings of the ombudsman. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Any questions, comments to us?
Thanks sir. I just want to ask, a couple of points, Joe, that I just wanted to ask. I mean, first of all, looking at section 111, we say there that the complaint of help by the ombudsman was that the Sheffield City Council's education and children's services failed to... Isn't the point about the ombudsman though, it's the city council as a whole. We're not just singling out children's services because this is point about transition. It's about what was adult services doing. So just that's comment, but it really leads on to my second question of, is there really, I mean, given that, you know, it takes a lot of bad practice to get to the ombudsman issuing a report. They don't do this lightly. Is there actually understanding of what we did wrong? We must have done as a council, which we're all responsible for, some series of things pretty badly over quite a tractive period. And obviously completely welcome that there's an action plan in place and there's new workers in post as well. But is there that understanding of who did something wrong? And obviously I'm not asking for names or in departments or anything, but is that understanding there? Just because it's not very comfortable having to deal with this, but someone needs to know who screwed up.
Thank you councillor Johnson. Yes, I think it is reasonable to say that there has been quite a thorough investigation over quite a period of time. And I understand that colleagues continue to work really closely with the, with the young person and their parent. I think there has been a huge amount of learning and I think that learning is reflected in the changes that we've made over the last 18 months. Those changes in terms of the reshaping of our services to better meet the needs of children and young people and their families, I think are, will take time and we will continue to monitor them very closely. I think that the, in addition, the work for the SEND Accelerator Plan is also really helping us to work as a whole system with health colleagues and education colleagues and other organisations and with, most importantly, with children, young people and families themselves in order to understand and check that the impact of the changes we're making are actually delivering improvements for young people. So yeah, in answer to your question, I think a very thorough investigation has taken place over a period of time and we continue to support that young person and their family.
Okay, thanks. And that's really welcome. So I need to suggest that, yeah, you've got to grips with that. Because my worry, if you like, was that, you know, we know that all services are under pressure massively. And if the answer was just, we recruit an extra additional seven social workers, you know, that might fix this particular thing, but it just shows that if that were the sole issue, it would just mean that you would be lining yourselves up for another failure in another department because, you know, we just need more staff and we don't have that. So that perhaps is reassured. Just want to make sure that learning had been undertaken and there's been progress there. That's welcome though, thanks.
Thanks, thanks to us. I've got Julie, Martin and Mick. Julie?
Thank you Chair. A couple of points for me please, if I may, Joe. I suppose the first most obvious one is, this is obviously something that's been happening since 2016 and I'm rather concerned that this has not been picked up through our scrutiny process that we had then. So, because clearly it shouldn't have got that this far if it had. And so I suppose it's about reassurance that as we've now moved to a new committee system of governance and we are doing pre-scrutiny, although we have the, still have the statutory responsibility, that these things will be picked up earlier in time now so that we can, you know, so we can deal with things more timely in future. The other point, 1.1.3, it says this council must consider this report and confirm within three months its action is taken. The council should consider the report as its full council cabinet or other appropriate delegated committee. So can you just confirm, is that what we're doing today or is it going somewhere else? Just so we're all clear on that please. And then the other point is at 4.3.3, it says that councils can decide to treat children's assessments as an adult assessment, that they can also, they can do joint assessments. So for me, it's just about moving forward. Are we clear, is this something that is going to be handled through adults? Which I think is what you alluded to with the summary that you've just given us. Or is this something that will continue to work on through the Education and Children's Policy Committee as well? Just so we all have a clear understanding of who is responsible moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks Julie. Martin, is yours around governance as well? I'll just bring it in and then I'll let Joe answer.
Yeah, it touches, sorry, thank you Chair. It touches on something that Julie mentioned. My question or my concern is around the oversight of the transition process. So please forgive me if I don't use the right jargon, but I've been informed that under the new governance process that we have, that up to the age of, I think it's 16, SEND provision is with councillor Rooney's committee. And above 16, it's with mine. And I first learnt that when I saw a proposal on SEND budget that was coming to mind. I was a bit surprised by that. That's the process, that's the process. But so we've got split accountabilities here. So given that we've been found wanting with the transition process, is there a risk in the way we're working that it could happen again? Or, and what's your professional view on clarities and roles and accountability? So I'd just like, welcome some advice. Thank you.
Thanks Martin. I'll make a view on this as well, because Angela as well. We'll take them all and then you can make your, because obviously my understanding is we've got the Health and Wellbeing Scrutiny Board that has an official function in this governance as well. So it's, sorry, Mick and then Angela, Mick.
As long as those that were in front of me don't mind me coming in right now. I'm okay to do that, yes. It is, is it? I'm sorry, I thought there were people in front of me. I think it's time frankly that the council put its hand up and said, you know, for a number of years, we haven't done the, some of the children, some of the most vulnerable children in this city justice with their needs. And there are a number of reasons for that. Some of it is organisational, some of it is to do with quality of our providers, some is to do with the fact that for a number of years, we've had to cut back on budgets, you know. And if you put all that into a mix, then you get a bad result. And unfortunately, the bad result is that for, as I said, for a number of years, a lot of children in this service have been let down because during their formative years, they've not received the service that they should have done. I mean, and I think at some stage, we need to admit that as a council. The thing that really concerns me about, well, there's a number of things, is the length of time it took for somebody to realise that actually we were letting this particular individual down. And I'm concerned that other families may have gone through a similar experience to this, but not taken it to the point of making an official complaint to the ombudsman. So that is another concern that's at the back of my head. The budgetary situation is confusing and I do think we need to sort that out. You can't have a position where two committees are just talking about the same budget. And in terms of responsibilities, it's different depending on, so for example, it could go up to the age of 23 or is it 25 even in terms of SEND? So we need to get a grip of that situation as well. Because I'm not sure that we have particularly. In terms, just to reassure councillor Grokko, in terms of scrutiny, I think, because I've sat on both sides of the table, one as a cabinet member and also now as a co-chair of a committee, but also as a scrutiny chair. And I can, I can assure you that the SEND situation was the most scrutinised issue that we ever dealt with when I was chair of that particular scrutiny committee. The problem was that if I, again, if I'm being brutally frank, the concerns that we raised as scrutiny weren't always acted upon. And it became a very, very sore point of annoyance, shall we say, for some of the issues. So we have looked at it, but I think in many respects that we've not really gone as deep into our analysis of what the problems were as we perhaps should have. And I do hope that, and again, going back to the financial situation, we've got a real problem because the budget that we got frankly is inadequate for this particular service and it's also inadequate for a lot of the vulnerable people in this city. So I think one of the things that we really need to learn... So I think one of the things that we really need to learn from this family's experience is the need to act early in trying to deal with the issues that they are facing. I think I've covered everything that I was going to say. If I haven't, then I'm quite happy to come back, and if anybody else wants to raise issues. Thank you.
Cheers, Mick. Angela, I've got nobody else after Angela. Bring Angela in, and then I'll let Jo speak. Angela?
Thank you, Jo, very much for the report, and I am very glad that we have things in place now. And I know with, you know, the new positions that have been created in leadership, hopefully we are at the point where, you know, the children side and the adult side of the transition are actually speaking to each other more efficiently. I think that is one of the problems that we have in such a big organisation, is that often things sit in two different parts, and we don't always talk to each other well enough to understand where the line is, or we don't make that kind of, we don't have that conversation. And I think some of the, you know, the worst cases that I've come across have always been where one department has not spoken to one department, to another department, and things have been kind of lost in translation. And I think we need to do better in that. And I know that there are plans around that in our kind of, in the delivery plan, but I want to be hopeful that something as awful as this is not going to happen again, because it might be one case in a lot, but there is one child, one family that we've let down.
Thank you, Angela. If we let one person down or a family down, then we should stand up and apologise totally. George, you want to capture those questions, comments, etc. Come, Mike.
Yes, thank you. And all really, really pertinent observations and responses, and I just want to thank you. And that was part of the reason for bringing this here, is because Strategy and Resources Committee has that representation from across the policy committees, and it felt really important that the ombudsman findings were brought here for due consideration, as per the ombudsman request, but also as per our responsibility to do better by children and families in the city. I think there are a number of points here. The first, if I take the one about oversight, I think that's a, it's a really, it's a very fair challenge, and I think, as has been referenced by a number of you, the issue of oversight has probably been, along with communication, at the root of us not getting to grips with this historically. And I agree that it's absolutely paramount that we overcome that now. And I think there is a challenge for us to ensure that we are working effectively, to ensure that the two policy committees, the adults and the children's focus committees, are able to ensure that we have a smooth transition. And perhaps that's another reason why it's helpful to bring it here, where we have chairs of both policy committees. The, I, so, in response to the point about coordination and ensuring as officers that under senior managers we are communicating effectively, I think that is another very fair point. My post as Director of Integrated Commissioning means that I span across adults and children's, and also with the NHS, with the ICB. And part of that responsibility is to ensure that actually we have the right systems and processes and the right services to meet the needs of people as they progress through their life, through their whole life. So I very much see it as part of my responsibility to ensure that I'm working with our Director of Children's Services, Andrew Jones, and with our Director of Adult Services, Alexis Chapel, to ensure that we have got really consistent oversight and challenge, as well as working with my colleagues in the Integrated Care Board place team. I'm very happy to bring further reports to this committee to update on progress. I am also taking a report to the Children's Education, Children and Families Committee later this year on progress against, in more detail, against our Accelerator Plan for SEND. And I very much hope that we will continue to track performance there. It certainly is something that has gone to scrutiny over the years on many occasions, I absolutely agree, and it may be appropriate that it is also considered there again in terms of our multi-agency approach with the ICB to improving transitions. The point about budgets is a very pertinent one. We do have to make sure that budget reporting lines for committees don't get in the way of having a broader understanding of the way that our services work to ensure transitions. And I think the point about acting early in a young person's life is absolutely pertinent. We need to have the right conversations earlier in order to support families, children, but also their parents and carers to think longer term, and to think about next steps and progression into adulthood. And that requires us to work as a whole system, not as just education, or just as children's services, or just as adult services. So absolutely, I absolutely agree, and I think the reshaping of our services speaks directly to that requirement.
Thanks, Jo. Mick?
It's a request, well, first of all, if I got a bit under the collar there, I do apologise, I wasn't having a go at you, Jo, at all. It was just the overall situation that I find very frustrating. It's a request that, I mean, we're aware of what's happening with Ascend and the improvements that we're trying to make, but I'm not sure that all of the 84 councillors that make up this council are. So I think maybe some sort of note to them that says, you know, we're doing this, this, this and this, I think that might be helpful, because it's probably, there are others, but it's one of the highest areas that I personally get complaints about and have over the years. So I think that might be helpful. But also, I think it might be helpful to councillors who are dealing with casework, if we have some sort of structure guide that says, if you've got this problem, this is the person to talk to. Because I'm not sure that that exists, or that it ever existed. And I know that over the last perhaps year and a half, there's been a considerable churn of the number of offices and the positions that they hold. So I think it might be helpful if we had a guide that says, you've got a problem with SEND, you talk to this person.
Right, thanks, Mick. Julie?
Just one point for clarification, please, picking up on Martin's point about him saying he's got some of the budget for SEND. And with my governance hat on, I'm just wondering how and why that is the case, because it's just another dynamic that is in this part, if this is the case, that could cause further complications. So I'm just wondering if that is something that we need to be looking at with the review of the Governance Committee.
Thanks, Julie. And I'm sure we can pick that up in November, as all these issues are being collated, I find, Jo. Okay, we've got the recommendations on the report, and the suggestion that Mick's put forward. Can we agree those? Thank you. Thanks, everyone. This is why I'm here, I do appreciate our warmest, but we're nearly there. Three more items, item 13, I think this is straightforward, a bid for the Department of Education, Children's Homes Capital Fund, Jo.
Yep, I will be swift on this one. As in the previous report, I wanted to spend some time to fully acknowledge the complaint, but I will go a little faster on this one. This, this report is to recommend that the committee endorse the submission of a bid to Department for Education's Children's Home Capital Fund. The bid is for 50% of the capital costs for building a new children's home. We're also requesting that the council be the accountable body for the grant if the bid is successful, and that the council provide the 50% match funding of the capital costs. The capital costs are in total, hold on, correct notes, the total cost for the capital build is £736,000, and that our proposal is that the council provides match funding by way of £300,000 land value and £68,000 towards the capital costs. The revenue costs, were we to be successful with this bid, would be met from our Children's Services budget. The proposal is to build a two to three bedroom home. It would be probably for two children, however, you know, it might be possible to accommodate a third young person, should there be really good compatibility and that suit the needs of all three young people. We currently have 25 places that are run by Sheffield City Council, and we operate four short breaks homes. We have seen a really significant increase in the number of looked-after children in the city over the last year, and we expect that figure to continue rising. We want to avoid reliance on external providers, while there are many good providers out there. We want to better manage within our own provision in order to have that control and that quality assurance that is so important to meet the needs of this cohort. So my request is just that we, the committee, endorse the submission of the bid.
Thanks, Jo. Shifak?
Thank you, Jo, and I just wanted to start by saying that I actually welcome your report and absolutely endorse your bid 110%. You know, we are corporate parents, all councillors, and we want our children to be living in Sheffield. What I don't want is our children to live in, say, for example, Blackpool, that's hit all the headlines. And actually, what we are talking about is, in essence, a family home. That's what you're really building. It's just that these young people need that extra care and attention. And for me, I just want to say to elected members that, you know, sometimes you have difficulties, particularly when communities hear the terminology, but I think what I'd say, Chair, is as someone that had that issue in a ward that I represented, actually, there was some concern initially, but actually, since then, I do not recall one complaint the last 14 years from the operations, because essence, these are just young people living in a home who just simply don't have their parents with them. And I think as long as we can endorse that view cross-party, Chair, I think a clear message going out that actually Sheffield wants to look after its own children in the city, because we are all corporate parents.
Thanks, Shifak, and I echo all them statements. Douglas?
Thanks, yeah, really good news. Yeah, let's crack on with this. The report doesn't say where the home is. I guess that's for, you know, good reason, and probably useful if we know at some point. I've just come to ask a question about the land value, though, and really, I just wanted to ask, this estimate of £300,000 for the land value, I'm just wondering if that is fully up to date, just because I'd be looking to see if it weren't, if that, you know, could be revised to, you know, something much more like £368,000, so we didn't have to put in that extra cash, then that's it. I just wonder what that was based on. Don't necessarily need to answer that now, but maybe it's something to take away.
Yes, thank you very much, councillor Mohammed. And councillor Johnson, yes, it is a recent land valuing. I can get more details from my colleagues from that department, but absolutely, it represents the most value we can get from that land. And yes, I will take that challenge back, but that's my understanding, is that it's very recent in response to the fact that there's a very short window of time for us to prepare this bid, so we've had to work very quickly over the last few weeks.
Thanks, Jo. If there's no more comments, I mean, I would welcome and all heartily back this, and I think the issue about more homes for kids being in Sheffield, and for some of us who came out of care, we're not all bad ones, so it's like I say, thanks for that. So can we agree those recommendations? Agree? Anybody against? If not, thank you. Thanks, Jo. Thanks, everybody. Can we go to item 14, capital approvals that you ran?
My name's Ryan Keyworth, I'm the council's director of finance and commercial services. Short capital approvals report today, just covering three items that are time-critical. The rest of the capital approvals will be on the finance subcommittee agenda next week. So three items are Woodburn Road Football Hub, so that's installation of 3G pitches, and actually a significant remodelling of the pavilion, the words in the report don't quite do it justice. About 80% of that is grant-funded. Small scheme at Pittworth School, basically to improve access to that site, the specific one in this one is a platform lift. And the acceptance of £3 million of grant funding from South Yorkshire Mayor Combined Authority to support the heart of the city scheme, particularly the redevelopment of the Gormont site and the hotel development across the road from the town hall and the peace gardens. Happy to take any questions, Chair. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Any questions? Got a few over there there. Okay, I'll take Mick, Martin, Richard and then Jo. Mick?
It's just one on the Woodburn Road development. Is this part of the initiative that was started some years ago about the, like, we've got, I've forgotten the name of it now, that's really clever, isn't it? The hubs, the plans were to have about five or six hubs, I believe, across the city, and I think at the moment we've got three. Would this be part of that programme? That would make four, is that right? And have we got any plans to complete the initial programme of, I think it was six, but that is testing an aging memory?
Shall I bring every memory and then let you then answer them, Ryan? Is that okay? So on that, I've just written the names down, go Martin, Richard and Jo. Martin?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Hopefully, just a simple question about the heart of the city, £3 million quid. It's great that somebody's offering the money. Is that to cover an overspend in that particular block, or are things on track? Thank you.
Right, Martin. Richard?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, I hope we can all support these, particularly, being totally selfish, the Woodburn Road Football Hub. I think it's amazing that the FA are going to be paying 80% of costs, and I think it's the type of thing that we should be looking more and more for. We're all aware of the budgets, but if we can get other people to spend money in Sheffield, that's absolutely fantastic. Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Finally, Jo.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, so I echo what Richard's just said, but no, my question, I'm happy with all the proposals here, I'm just slightly curious about the process. I don't want to accidentally spend money on one capital project that might want to go on another one later. So at what point do we as members of this committee see a list of projects and say, well, this is how much money we've got, which ones do you want to fund? I appreciate some of these have specific funding sources attached, such as the South Yorkshire Authority or the FA, but kind of generally, where do we as members make the choice on what priorities are for the capital budget?
Thanks, Jo. I don't think that could be framed a better individual than Ryan himself, so thanks for that, Jo. Ryan, would you like to sweep them up? Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Councillor Rooney, your memory's not failing at all. There are three hubs in place, this is number four, I'm not sure about number five, but this, as in when or where that might arise, but that's exactly what it is. It's one of the football hubs, and it involves basically getting the facilities there up to standard for that purpose.
Sorry to interrupt you, Ryan. Could we, does that mean that the other two are still on the cards in the future? I realise that we may have come to a sort of hiatus with the programme, but they've not been, it's not been cancelled, has it? Sorry about that, Chair.
Straight answer, councillor Rooney, is I don't know about number five. There are three already, this is number four, number five is the one that I just don't know about, so I'll get an answer back for you on that one. Heart of the City, it's about part of the scheme, a specific part of the scheme or parts of the scheme that the Mayor Combined Authority are able to help us out with, so it's not about that. Overall capital strategy comes to council every year. So as part of the annual budget process, there's a huge report that comes-
So as part of the annual budget process, there's a huge report that comes forward and that's, the schemes we're talking about here are actually all referred to in that, this is about the specific parts of that. Councillor Wilson, I think, I don't know if your, your comment question required a response, if you could repeat parts of it, if I've misunderstood?
No, it's just really general comments and let's try and get more of these funds.
Thanks, everybody. If there's no more, I just want to give a big shout out for Pittworth, we keep patching that up, we do need a new scale up in Manor, so a real big shout out for any kind of funding out there, we will have it in Manor. Bear in mind, we've got a thousand new homes going up in that area, so any time. But on those recommendations that are put forward, can we agree those recommendations? Agree? Anyone against? Thank you. The final item is to agree the minutes of the Urgency Subcommittee held on the 8th. Can we agree those minutes? Agreed, thank you. I know it says the next meeting on Saturday will be Wednesday the 12th of October, but I'd just like to put you on, on notice that we will have another urgency one, that will be regarding the bid, I think it's the 7th of September, because the bid's got to be on the 8th for Eurovision, so that will be put in front of members, so just put you on notice for that. Thank you, everybody, thanks for today's meeting and I should hopefully hear the chimes in a minute at four o'clock, thank you.